Time is 7:00 PM. Call the meeting to order. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Originally, we had the Auburn High School football team that we invited here. We couldn't seem to get together as a... their group or us on an appropriate night, and so much time has passed that I think that we'll pay our respects and let it go at that. I had the opportunity of attending the game that day. One, I'd like to congratulate the team on winning the state Division II A championship. Two, I'd like to compliment both the offense and defense. Both played equally well that game. They played a fantastic game, and I'd like to congratulate them all on the season that they had. Any other members of the board who wish to make any comments? Oh. I was informed that you weren't coming. I just made a few comments, fellas, on congratulating you on winning the II-A division of the state championship. I had the opportunity of attending the game, and both the offense and the defense played exceptional that game. You both need to be commended for your performance that game. First, I'll ask any other members if they'd like to make a few comments. Then I would like you to give your names at the podium, your class that you're in, and so on, so the people that get home can put a face to the names. Ms. Westman.
Hey, congratulations. I mean, believe it or not, I used to play football, too, but, you know, mostly in front of television. No, but I understand, though, you guys did... I gotta watch my language. One great job. And, you know, you look at you guys, this is what makes Auburn great. You were a small town, but guys like you, it gives us one good look for what the future might be. Really, congratulations. If you need a quarterback, call me. Foxwood.
Anyone?
Great job, guys. I watched all the games. I went to just about every one of them. My son plays pop Warner. He loved it. He usually doesn't watch your games, but he plays football next to you guys when you're playing. It was great. I think one of you broke your foot. Yeah, played the rest of the game, and I think somebody's going to school on a scholarship for baseball. Unbelievable. So it is a testament to the... not a sports program in the high school, but I imagine at least one of you played pop Warner. Yeah, so, I mean, it starts real young, and these kids work their way up, and then we go... You know, it shows the drive and the diligence, the dedication, the discipline that sometimes you don't learn in the classroom, but on the field. So, great job.
Okay. Would each of you step to the podium, give your name, your year, whether you're a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior, and the position you played on the team?
I am Corey Roy. I am a senior this year, and I was the running back, the safety, and the kicker.
Thank you.
Alex Filier. I'm a senior, and I played linebacker.
I'm John Leroux. I'm a senior, and I played quarterback.
I'm Marcin Vorak. I play defensive end.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, fellas. Thank you. First, minutes of November 10th, a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Give us a vote. Agenda item four, Citizens' Comments. First, we have Dr. Mary Ellen Bonnell, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grossman, and members of the Board of Selectmen, for recognizing me, also Mr. Kasnovich and Mr. O'Connor. I think one thing important to note before I share with you what it was I came to speak about, a really important feature. These young gentlemen came along with Coach Cormier to our last school committee meeting, and it's really a tribute to the coach and the staff that he does, which is in combination and concert with what we do on the academic end. They hold the children to very high standards, and I think what you saw before you in the scholarship that you referenced, Mr. Hammond, is really a reflection of everybody working together. So I appreciate you recognizing these fine young men, as you just did. I'm here before you tonight to inform you that the school department's draft budget proposal was submitted to Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Kasnovich on Thursday, January 15. I'm pleased to report that after budget discussions and deliberations that began in earnest in early October... Although, when I think back, I think it was probably one of the first discussions I had when I arrived in July with the business manager. But as a leadership team, we really embraced this in October. The school committee, the other evening, on January 14th, voted a draft budget proposal which is $4,850 less than the FY 2009 appropriation. That request totals $20,584,542. This budget was created in complete recognition of the challenging fiscal times in which we all find ourselves. In fulfillment of our commitment to transparency for the entire school department, all items that have been presented to the school department thus far can be found on the Auburn Public Schools website. That can be accessed at www.auburn.k12.m-a.us/web site. There was an entire section dedicated to the FY 2010 budget. Included there are three specific links, the first being the executive summaries. Those are documents created by the administrators or department chairs and details the accomplishments of FY 2009, as well as plans as we move forward. In addition, the budget presentations that were made by each of those administrators is also included, and many of those are in PowerPoint. Finally, the FY 2010 draft budget proposal, including the amount in each line item, is likewise posted. As we move forward, the plan will be as follows. At the school committee meeting on Monday, February 2nd, I anticipate that the school committee will establish the date of the public hearing. As per Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38-N, this will be well advertised, with invitations being sent to all town meeting members, as well as to each of you, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, Mr. O'Connor, and Mr. Kasnovich. As with all of our meetings, though, this will be open to the public. I anticipate it will likely be held at the auditorium of Auburn High School to accommodate people who will be in attendance, but again, that will be decided on Monday evening. At this public hearing, we will afford any and all interested persons the opportunity to ask questions regarding any line item in the budget, with detailed responses provided. As I have stated in several memos and in conversations with many of you, on behalf of the school committee and the entire school department, I look forward to working with you as a town as we truly meander these really challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions at this point? We'll wait till the meeting. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Lori Lancia.
Hi, Lori Lancia, 751 Washington Street. I'm here tonight to ask the Board to consider authorizing a financial management review. It's offered by the Department of Revenue, Local Services Division. Auburn had a review done in 1999. I spoke pretty extensively today with the chief of the Bureau, who organizes all of the reviews. They come into the town hall, and they analyze all of the offices. They interview the department heads, and they find areas where you can improve and save money or, you know, adjust things. But I think at this time, with the economic problems that we're having, it would be a great time to look into this. It's free of charge. They interview the department heads, they watch the day-to-day operations, and then they make suggestions, they come to conclusions. It's an option to go by their suggestions, but I think it would be a benefit for the town to look into something like this and see where maybe we can clean something up and save a little bit of time or money and work towards a more efficient system.
I feel very strongly that, you know, perhaps we should do it again. There's no cost to us, and we have nothing to do but benefit from it, so I can't see a reason why, you know, the Board would not be in favor. You have any comments?
I just think it's a fabulous idea, especially in light of the times we're in. So I would make a motion to initiate the financial management review.
For a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Okay. Go ahead.
Lori, how much time do they spend up here? I'm just kind of curious.
They work around the schedules of the departments. They don't want to interfere with the day-to-day operations, so they will make their appointments for their interviews according to the best time for each office. You know, they don't want to interfere with anybody's jobs or... and their interviews. They can limit them. They can get the most pertinent information on the first visit, and if they have to come back, they call, they make an appointment, but they're very sensitive about interfering.
Now, that goes through, like, all the town schools and everybody? Is it the whole town itself?
It's available to all of the communities in Massachusetts. I printed out the one from the town of Uxbridge from May 2008. I made you all a copy. It's really interesting. I was pretty impressed with the work that they do. And I have the Bureau Chief's name is Rick Kingsley, and he said if anybody has any questions, to feel free to call him at his office, and he'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Okay. One question is, is there any indication or to give you indication of how long they would be able to do the review?
Well, he said that there is a waiting list right now, but the sooner we get a letter of authorization in, the sooner he can schedule it. He said if we got a letter in within the next week or 10 days, we could probably have this done by August. September the latest.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and any other discussion? Ms. Valentine?
Just the Chair, if you would make sure we get a report that was submitted to us in 1999, because I think she said the last time it was done was 1999.
Mr. Kingsley was gonna email me that report today, and he got right in the middle of it, and the computers all went down. So he's supposed to be emailing me that tomorrow, and I'll photocopy it and send it off to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a... Mr. Hammond?
I just think we should stress to all town departments that, you know, the Board would hope and expect full transparency and cooperation with this review as well. You know, let's open up and let them look at everything that we possibly can, so we're not... We should be as compliant with them as we can be.
I haven't had a chance to, you know, look through the just presented to us tonight, but does this include schools as well as municipal?
No, this is just the municipal end of it. But the Department of Local Services, they offer a whole scope of audits and reviews of every department, and, you know, you just have to schedule that with a different department director from local services. But they're quite extensive on their list of offerings that they have for free, and...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, give us a vote. See that we get it out right away.
I drafted an authorization letter, if you want it, just to save time, because I know Sharon gets awfully busy.
You can leave that with Sharon. Ms. Westman.
This is for all the residents in town. The Keepin' Auburn Warm Group is holding a walkathon this Saturday, the 31st, at the Auburn Mall, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We've got a couple sponsors, including the Piccadilly Pub, Paula Beverage, and WRC. Adam Webster will be there for the kickoff at 10:00 AM. T-shirts for everybody bringing in 25 more and sponsor money, so come down and join the fun. But the main reason we're running this is because of the upcoming weather and the prices of oil. And the money that we take in from this here will be gone to, you know, Keepin' Auburn Warm, and if there's people that need money, fuel, and things like that, that's what this is all about. So please, everybody come up.
Better bring up the other issue, the other thing, the pond.
Oh, yeah, but that's... We also have another one, and this is a good one, but that will probably come out maybe in about another two or three weeks. Now, I don't want nobody to laugh at me now, but we got an outhouse going on the pond behind the fire station. We're gonna sell tickets, and the closest person to get that outhouse sinking is gonna come up with one great prize, and the prize is, you know, we're gonna make it a Libia Television or a generator. So please, it's only a one-seater, though. So that's what's coming up, Keep Auburn Warm.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westman. Under Agenda Item 5, under Public Hearings and Presentations, we have a change of manager for Outback Steakhouse. We have an application for a change of manager located at 771 Washington... Southbridge Street. Need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have comments from the applicant?
How are you today, tonight? My name's Christopher McLeod. I just took over as the manager at the Outback at 771 Southbridge Street, and just wanted to do the manager change, and that's why I came in today. So I don't know if you have any questions, anything that...
I have a couple. One, have you been a manager before at another location, or...
Yeah, I've worked for Outback for nine years now. I've been a manager for five years. I was in Secoq previous to the Secoq, Massachusetts, and Billingham, Massachusetts, previous to that, so...
Well, being a manager, you're probably not involved with serving any alcoholic beverages, but if you are, are you tip-satisfied?
Yep. Yes, sir. And I also like to note, I've been there since November, and I've heard from different bartenders, and I've seen one myself where some plainclothed police officers came in and were tried to be served or sent in someone to try to be served without an ID or underage. And all of our bartenders have always passed, never failed, so we want to continue with that and make sure everybody's getting carded every time. And, like I said, we've been good in the past, and we're gonna continue in the future with that.
Questions of any of the other Board members before we close the hearing? Have a motion to close the hearing? Huh?
Move to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the change of manager to Tracy Wiley, to Christopher McLeod.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Give us a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Under Appointments and Resignations, on committee vacancies, the Board continues to advertise for the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Youth Commission, Alternative Delegate to Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. No applications have been received. Agenda Item 6B, we have a resignation from the Cemetery Commission. We have a letter from Mr. Benjamin Britton notifying the Board that he is resigning from the Cemetery Commission. Motion be in order to accept his resignation and send him a letter of appreciation.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, give us a vote. Then we need a motion to advertise for the vacancy.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, give us a vote. Agenda Item 7A, a transient vendor license. Enclosed, we have an application from Tap Enterprises for a transient vendor license for their tool sale at Century Sportsman's Club as in past years. Enclosed are the comments from the Development Coordinating Group, comments from the Board.
So this is gonna get kicked back to them anyways, because they have to provide the dates of operation. And to make sure that we send along from the DCG, the note about all signs must be on the property, because last year, they did not follow through, and they actually didn't run the show because they didn't like that end of the agreement. This is a group that's left their signs up all over town in the past, so we want to make sure they understand that they have to be on the Century Sportsman's Club property.
Okay, so we're requesting that we have the dates and hours of operation and that they know that the signage can only be on the property itself. Is anyone here from Sportsman's Club? No, I don't see anyone. So we'll have to request that, and they'll have to come back to us in a future meeting. Agenda Item 8A, Highway Surveyor. Enclosed, we have a report from the Highway Surveyor concerning snow and ice expenditures. The snow and ice deficit, which we just received today, the following accounts are in default, part-time wages of just over $6,000, overtime of a little over $8,000, and equipment rental, $31,700, for a deficit of $46,119.18. The following counts still have positive balances. Storm trees, $950; winter sand, $12,500; and salt and calcium, $23,600. As you know, we've got another storm coming upon this schedule for... According to the TV, it's gonna hit sometime tomorrow night between 3:00 and 6:00 AM and continue throughout the day on Wednesday. So that's only going to increase the deficit that much more. Mr. Hammond?
I think we were on this yesterday, so I don't want to belabor it, but what was the total amount allocated to this account?
In the budget?
Yeah. What's it...
I think $191,000?
And we're 46 over 191.
Still, we still have...
There's about $36,000 left in surplus accounts that have... on the bottom half. So right now, we probably net about $10,000.
Okay. And we still have reimbursements?
Reimbursements, I do.
I do, on their way.
Not on their way. It has not been submitted yet. I have a scheduled meeting with FEMA sometime on Wednesday to go over the reimbursements.
Good luck.
Whether that meeting will be postponed at this point, I don't know, but it is in the works.
Okay.
Agenda Item 9A, Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust borrowing. We have a note. Enclosed, a vote to be passed by the Board relating to the town's borrowing from Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust. Not gonna read it all, I just need... It doesn't even... Who does have to be signed for, it says clerk.
That's just to attest to the fact that it was part of a...
Oh, okay. So we need a vote in favor of this?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. O'Connor, I know the answer to this, but in light of the economic times, do you think... This is state mandated, correct, as part of the federal?
I thought, to be honest with you, I thought we were gonna have the engineer here tonight. Do you know what the mandate...
It's a federal mandate.
Right.
This is an EPA situation that cities and towns have very little discretion about.
No, I know. And I'm wondering, and this is one of, you know, a lot of federal mandates, if there's any discussion of giving local communities a break on these things right now, given how we're struggling just to pay the most basic bills, take on this kind of borrowing.
Through the Chair to Mr. Griffins, we can make them aware of it, but...
Oh, I know, I know the answer.
You can't promise your reception.
No. But it's just, it's an amazing amount of money that we're borrowing. Not that clean water is not important, but we're really dealing with some pretty basic issues right now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All votes are approved?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Gift acceptances. The Mass. General Law is Chapter 44, Section 53-A. The Gilmore family of Appleton Road, $50 for the Council on Aging. Allen Community Health Plan, 10 Chestnut Street, Worcester, $300 for the Council on Aging for grocery vouchers for elders. From the Fire Department, to the Fire Department, from Richard and Roberta Ballson, $50 for the Fire Department gift account. For the Police Department, from Gail Hartman, $50 for the K-9 unit. We have a motion to accept with gratitude. You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, give us a vote. Agenda Item 9C, the High School Project Closeout Audit Documents. Enclosed are the documents relating to the closeout audit for Auburn High School Project. A motion would be in order to approve and authorize the Chairman to sign the documents presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
So, I'm sorry, just so I know what we're approving here. So this has been reviewed and audited by... This would be an SBA audit for the Chair. We did receive this last week. This is scheduled to go before the SBA at a meeting, I believe scheduled for Thursday of this week. There is an itemization of costs. Some of those costs we are questioning. We have a memo prepared that I'd like to hand out that is going back with this request. The town is due approximately $1.1 million. This is the final leg. This will lead to the release of a portion of those funds as the audit is... as the audit commences and ultimately ends with $1,114,530 due to the town. So we would like to get that into the town's coffers as soon as possible, only because we are currently paying for obligations that still exist at the Auburn High School through monies that we do not have in-house. So we would just save on interest payments by getting this money back to the town. So our approval of the audit report doesn't affect disputing these other charges in this memo?
No, even if these costs are disallowed, we're still gonna get the $1.1, because our total eligible is $34 million. Our costs far exceed that, so even if they back some of these costs off, we still meet that baseline of $34 million. But it's a matter of principle, it's a matter of costs we believe to be eligible, even though they're not gonna change the reimbursement. We just want to make sure that we further explain these costs to SBA, and they become a qualifying eligible expense. And we know some are not gonna be eligible, because land-taking matters, land acquisition, land surveys are not eligible costs. We knew that right from the get-go. It does get folded into the total project cost. But some of these, such as computer equipment identified under micro net, $517,000. I had a discussion with James Norton, URS. We believe all these costs should be eligible for reimbursement, so these are some of the disputed items that we're gonna get resolved as we march through that final audit.
Well, if there's no effect, you know, on the SBA seeing it first before, I would address a motion to approve and...
We have that.
You have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, give us a vote. Agenda Item 9D, the Highway Furnace Bid. Enclosed, we have a decision of the Attorney General relative to the bid protest filed by the Worcester County Refrigeration. Not gonna read it all, but basically, they had filed a complaint because the... I'm not going to read it all, but basically, they had filed a complaint because the bids were not awarded on the date that they were scheduled to because we were under a state of emergency that day declared by the governor. And unnecessary vehicles were not supposed to be on the road, so the bids were not awarded until Monday. This company filed a complaint and we won. We did not lose. They voted in our favor for a change. That's where we stand on that complaint. Tax rate increase, this item was requested by Mr. Gribbins.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman, and I appreciate your cooperation in putting this on again. For the last couple of meetings, I've tried to build a case for freeing up the possibility of the local tax, property tax increase that would have freed up $730,000, but that doesn't seem to be moving ahead. So I think we're at a point in the budget cycle where we need to see the impact of both the decrease in the state revenue stream as well as that decrease in the local revenue stream. And so I'd like to get a budget presentation from the town accountant and town administrator. I'll put this in the form of a motion, working with the finance committee. So we get a sense as a board, since we've had a hand in this, that we get a sense as a board and the finance committee gets a sense of this as well and the public, of what's going to be required to close this 2.2 million dollar budget gap. So I'd like to put a motion on the table, because right now, we're just talking, it's all speculative. You know, we've had a lot of proposals. I think we know there's a lot of things and everything's on the table in this kind of economic situation. But I think we need to get down to specifics now. The budget's moving along right now, and I think people in the town need to understand the impact of these budgetary constraints on them and the town services. So I want to move that the town accountant and administrator, working with the finance committee, prepare a high-level budget presentation. This is not a budget. This is just going to run scenarios so that we can see different ways of closing this gap and then the pain involved with it. And then selections can be made, things can be prioritized, and decisions can be made with very specific information. So reflecting what would be required to close a $2.2 million budget gap, I would ask you to run various scenarios, recognizing that many of these would require union cooperation. So I'm mindful of that going into this, but these are things being considered in other towns, where everything is on the table. The possibility of a reduced work week in terms of number of hours, and I'll give you a copy of this, Mr. O'Connor, so. Reduction of staff, again, laying off town employees and not filling open positions. A number of positions had been identified over the past couple of weeks that would not be filled, the savings that would be derived from this. Closing or reduction of services, as we see going on in other communities, services and operations, which would include the library, senior center, recreation department, variations on that, from total closing to reduced hours, closing of the Auburn, West Auburn Fire Station. And again, not all of these are going to happen, so not to terrify people in the community, but that we can see what would be saved by looking at variations on these themes through scenarios and just how much of this we would have to do to close that gap. Wage freeze, which again would naturally require the cooperation of all town employees. Healthcare savings, which are getting more and more difficult to get our hands around with the budget cuts and cuts and uncertainties about the GIC, but we, you know, we just have to be able to run projections around that, given the uncertainty of where that is right now. And at this time, I'd like to open it to other variables recommended by other members of the board, other possibilities that they would like to see explored, that they would like to add to it.
I'll second the motion.
I'll conclude the motion. Are there the variables that you want to add?
The auctioning of land, found on property that would be feasible, keeping in mind open space, is not something we want to really consider at this time, because you can only own it once. Somebody once told me, it's a lot easier to get it, and then once you sell it, you don't get it back. So we've already started working on that list, but really start to identify the properties that can. I know specifically, there's one with some concern with contamination as to whether or not that can be sold as is, or if it needs further investigation by the town to be able to do that. I think if we can sell it as is, that's what we want to do. Otherwise, it's not going to be viable because it will cost too much, but maybe get some opinions. If we can sell any contaminated land as is, or all land as is, so we don't have to do the due diligence, we don't want to bear any cost to try to sell it. So I think that was a big one. And further, the one thing I really want to see, and we know we made a motion on it last time, was to get a vote on GIC up or down by February 15th. We've made one, I think Mr. Gribbins has made one contact on behalf of the board to the representatives of GIC, we'll make another one, but we really want to get that vote up or down from GIC before we... Personally, before I look at anything else, I think that is the axis of this, and it will totally change the landscape of how we approach it. So $1.3 million realized in savings for FY11 doesn't help us in this year's budget, but it will certainly dictate how we approach this year's budget. So we need that information, whether it's a yes or a no, we still need to know.
Other others?
Anyone else to add to the motion? You adding to the motion?
Well, I just wanted to make sure we get the final figures from the state, too. That's not a big play in this, you know.
Yeah, right now, we're working on just, we're working on that $2.2 million. That's all we have right now. So I mean, that's likely to change, but at least, right now, we have a scenario. And I realize, let's say, for example, reduction of staff, well, what are we talking about there? So you're going to have to give us a unit, a unit there, saying a $38,000 employee with, you know, fully loaded with 27% or 25%, whatever figure you're using for benefits, what you would save on that unit employee. And at least, we would have that figure to look at, and we know how many of that type of employee we'd have to lose. If we laid off a more expensive employee, then maybe one would save two jobs, but we'd at least have a unit savings. We need to get down to looking at very hard figures here in terms of what it's going to take to do this and the pain that's going to be involved with that. So I would just close with saying, I do not expect actual decisions to be made. This is not a final budget. It's just to give us something hard and black and white that we can look at, so we have a sense of, can we do this through a reduced work week? Can we do this through a reduction of staff? Can we do this through the healthcare savings? Or a combination of these units? It's just going to allow us to work through this and make an informed judgment about which combination of cuts we would support. This would also serve as a first step in communicating to the public the difficult decisions we must face as a community. I would ask that this information be presented to the board as soon as possible, but no later than the first meeting in March, but I think it has to happen before then, given the timings of the finance committee meetings. And I would ask that the board would support the scheduling of a special meeting for this presentation if necessary.
Okay, Mr. Hennig?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I think, I think the budget schedule calls for a presentation on the 18th of February.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, you have a motion, we have a second on Mr. Grib...
Yeah, I second.
Dr. Gribbins' motion, okay. Any additional discussion?
You know, I think I'd be remiss not to recognize that the school committee has provided us with a number that we can now use in terms of what they've been able to identify. So I'd like to thank Mary Ellen, as well as the entire committee, to give us a number to plug in, so we now know what that 2.2 represents on this side of the budget, because they have actually absorbed some of that 2.2 with what they're presenting. So it's great that we have that number. Now we have something to plug in that was a huge variable that we didn't have before, that we really couldn't do a lot because we didn't know what we were working with. Now we'll know exactly what the town's working with on this side to try to close based on this. So thank you very much for getting that over as soon as possible. I appreciate that. So we'll use that as a basis for the schools, and any questions you have, I guess you can address to Dr. Brunel.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
And I'm just saying, just on the discussion, Mr. Grossman, I just want to emphasize to the people in the community that we're not suggesting that this is going to happen, but it's, we're just at a point now where we just can't be looking at a figure that's $2.2 million. We have to stop putting faces on it. We have, people have to understand how it's going to affect services in this town, so that it's not going to happen as we're getting close to town meeting. It's too late then. So I just want people to understand that we're not presenting this as a budget, just as scenarios.
Yeah. Laurie, you, your hand up?
Would it be possible, instead of talking about cutting jobs and cutting hours and services, could we look into something that's income generating instead? We all remember the ice storm in December and all the trees that could have been pruned by someone other than Mother Nature, but maybe we should look into a forest harvestery program? I had spoken with Hull Forest Products out of Connecticut last year when we were dealing with Eddie Pond Dam, and he had suggested putting together a program where selective harvesting could happen throughout the town, which would make the young trees healthier and get rid of the old trees that tend to be a hazard to our homes and our vehicles. But this kind of a program is just one example of a moneymaker for the town. Instead of taking someone's job, let's cut down some trees that are going to do more damage in the long run. But there's all kinds of programs out there, instead of cutting back on the things that people are, they live and breathe for. I mean, these are their jobs. This is their livelihood. Can we look into other avenues rather than take away?
I think we're willing, really, to look into anything that'll be cost-saving, you know, any idea that anyone might have. Mr. Hennig?
Yeah, I'd say submit whatever ideas you have to the town administration. And at this point, I mean, we understand, I understand the magnitude of, you know, especially 68,000 jobs lost today, but again, the harsh realities of life have now come before us, and we can't ignore it. I think any ideas anyone has, we're willing to at least look at.
Mr. Grossman?
Thank you.
I mean, myself, I know we've got a lot of problems, but I don't like the idea of starting to talk about job loss and things like that until we get the final facts. I mean, it's a good idea, but I can't vote for it until we have all the facts in front of us and the exact amount of money that's got to be spent out. I mean, that's my opinion on it.
And once again, we're not suggesting that we're voting on anything here. It's that we do know the reality of a $2.2 million budget gap. We know that that gap has to be closed. We have to have a balanced budget. So we just, all we're doing now is exploring what needs to be done to do that. I mean, that's the reality of where we've put ourselves. Some state imposed, some self-imposed, and we just need to know the reality of how we deal with it.
Okay, I just want to say something on Laurie's idea about with the trees and stuff like that. If you know, every year, we put money into the budget to cut trees down. Maybe that's something we can add, where we can save the money from the budget by going with a program like that. Not only you give them dead trees in town, but we've been running budgets 30, up to $35,000 a year. You can turn around and eliminate that, and that's saving.
Mr. Chair? I'd just like to ask Bill, you know, the spirit of this, because you did ask for any additional line items that we would bring forward for consideration. I'll put it, trying to figure out how to put the question. Is the spirit of it to provide for administration the cuts that you're interested in seeing, or is the spirit of it to make sure the administration knows of potential cuts that you're aware of, that they should at least be considering? Really, what I'm getting after is, do we want to have input from the administration that might be outside of the list of requirements that you've listed?
I think if there were other ones that they could suggest as well, I think that certainly would, and I would assume that, it's assumed that all of the other savings that had been identified by departments would be factored in as well.
Okay.
But the idea is now just compile a list. Then we'd have to go through the process of prioritizing, deciding what's mission-critical in town, what's going to affect revenue coming into the town, so on and so forth, what will affect public safety. We'll have to go through that whole vetting process. That's the second stage. Right now, it's just identify where the money lies and how we can make up this short form.
So I just wanted to make, as I vote in favor of it, I want to make sure that the spirit of it is to ask also for as many ideas as can come forward with the people closest to the, to the departments, whether that be our administration, whether that be department heads, that, you know, that's where there's likely, and not being disrespectful to quote "our" ideas, but, but that's where there's, there's likely some more information to come forward that would be helpful to all of us.
And in terms of the spirit, I think that, that's part of the spirit is that by beginning that process, we will identify other issues. We're going to, we're going to find every cost savings possible in this town. That's, that's the purpose.
Sharon, will you incorporate that into the motion?
I don't think it's necessary. I just wanted to understand the spirit of it.
Just that everyone understands that, okay. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Agenda item 9F, the release of executive session minutes. This item was requested by Mr. Gribbins.
I'd like to make a motion that we begin to prepare executive session minutes that are eligible to be made public for, I know there's a process of reviewing and all of that first, but that we begin the process and make those executive session minutes public when, at the earliest possible time.
Okay, I don't want to slap anyone's hand, but I just recently went through and brought myself up to date on the executive session minutes, and there's a lot of minutes that have only been approved by two selectmen, and we need at least three in order to release. So everyone needs to get in and sign the minutes on those that can be released so that we can release them. Agenda item 10, under...
I second the motion, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under agenda item 10, old business, school projects, no change. Secret acceptance procedure, no change. Veterans Memorial Courtyard, no change. Cemetery land, conflict of interest, Barbara Ave, no change. School Buildings Committee Schedule 19, no change. The FY 2010 budget guidance, we've just discussed that. If anyone has anything addition to add.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just, you know, I'm going to keep harping back to it, but before I would ever be comfortable in increasing anyone's taxes or even considering such a thing, the GIC thing needs to be addressed by the employees. Absolutely, 100% needs to be addressed and voted up or down. Further, I think this board really, I know we'll get more into it, but really needs to start considering approaching all, all union representation for a, for wage freeze, as well as foregoing raises and figuring out how to get through that. I know we just touched upon it, but I want to reiterate that, because between those two things, that's $2 million approximately right there, 1.3 for GIC and over $600,000 for wage increases FY 10. So that's, those are the figures that are attached to those. Thanks.
Okay, agenda item 10, a charter bill. Has that been resubmitted? Is that what this is, the charter that...
Through the chair, Mr. Hennigan, I believe had a scheduled conference call with House Counsel on Thursday, oh, Wednesday. For whatever reason, they were not able to connect. I think they were going to try to do so before tonight's meeting. We haven't received any information or any correspondence from Attorney Hennigan yet. Unless Charlie.
Mr. Chairman, you're scheduling, or we're scheduling a meeting of the board for Thursday evening. And speaking to Mr. Hennigan, I think we'll have written documentation that he was expecting facts to him by that time. So as Thursday was meant to be an executive session, we'll put a short public session on that. He did not have that information from the Senate Council, Senator House Counsel's office this afternoon as yet, but he has had the discussion, and I think I've spoken to some of you regarding that. We should have it by Thursday.
Okay. Agenda item 10J, the GIC, we've discussed it. I think that we said it's important that we have it. We've mentioned that the finance committee needs it by the 18th, and it was mentioned that, that we have it by the, a response from the committee by the 15th. I think we need to hold to that so that the information is available for the finance committee on the 18th. If I can make that, the form of a request that we do, we do have that information in our hands by the, to close the day on the 15th.
I'll motion to re-send this follow-up letter to the representation that, that we're respectfully requesting a vote on that by February 15th. It's, you know, very important that we, we know where we stand with that. So I would make a motion to send a follow-up letter, again, requesting a vote by February 15th for all... for all employees of town regarding the GIC.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Agenda item 11, legislative issues, are there any?
Mr. Grossman, I'd like to send a note to Senator Moore and Representative Frost, and I'll put it in the form of requesting them to file legislation, but I'm assuming they're going to want to investigate it first, bringing up an issue that we brought up with them several years ago, but there wasn't the stomach in the legislature to do it, but that they reconsider the notion of instituting local impact fees within the state of Massachusetts. This is done throughout the country, and for those of you who are not familiar with the concept, it's, it's the notion that a community, over time, has made a big investment in infrastructure. A good example would be our high school, that we, as taxpayers, have been paying, you know, on, on that debt. A new development comes in five years from now, it greatly increases the value of their homes, but what they do right now is, they take all that profit, and they keep it themselves, and that profit is derived from the investment that we've made in this community over decades. So, what a local impact fee does is, it's assessed directly when a development or business comes into a community, and the money is portioned out, and so, a certain amount of money goes directly to the schools, to highway, to police, and to fire, according to the demand that they place on the services, and how much value they're taking out of the investment that we've made in the community. Those impact fees are attached immediately to the home, so the taxpayer is not paying a dime. What they're basically doing is paying the equivalent of back taxes, because they're, they're getting the benefit from the investment that we've made in the community without paying anything into it, and the developer reaps all of the reward, because they basically just see it as, as increased profit. Massachusetts is one of the few states in the, in the country, and that doesn't have some form of local impact fees, and in many states, they wouldn't survive without these impact fees. It doesn't cost the taxpayer a dime, it, it, it's all borne by the developer. Now, you can make an argument that the people are paying more for the houses, but that's what, that's the price of coming into this nice community, and the investment that we've made over decades. So, I would like to ask Representative Frost and Senator Moore to consider filing legislation. I don't think there's going to be any better time, as we're looking at bringing more money to the local communities. There's never going to be a better time to get the legislature to consider it. I mean, the other thing that you have to look at is, Massachusetts has one of the highest percentage, when you look at how much of the local costs are borne by local property taxes, Massachusetts is among the highest in the country. In other states, it's, it's spread out over the state, it's more money's coming in a local aid. In Massachusetts, the highest percentage is borne by local property taxes. So, again, the state has to help us out, and somehow relieving this burden off of the local property taxes, local impact fees would be one way of doing it, without affecting the, the citizens at all.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Give a second.
Second, any other discussion?
I would just go one step further, and it's, it's well-known that the taxes for residents in Auburn are on the lower end of the state, which makes developments even that more attractive to come here, because of the low tax base for, for the residents. So, you're stuck in a quandary if you want to keep the residents' taxes low, but on the other hand, because of that, you're putting a big "Come Here" sign to all developers in town. What this would do is, this would offset that attractiveness by almost putting up a deterrent for major developers to come into town, because of the additional cost. It would basically offset the low taxes, which would make you more comparable to other communities.
And that, and that's an important fact, because I think a lot of people say, well, then, then it's going to drive up, you know, the price of housing, but people need to understand, when we say, the taxes are low here, local property taxes in Massachusetts on single-family dwellings, we're 85th from the bottom, okay, and, and, we're at the, we're at the bottom of the 352 communities in this state, we're, we're 85th. So, our tax, residential tax bill is low compared to other communities in the state. So, you're right, if we want to maintain that, and, and again, developers are coming in and reaping the benefits of that, there's a price they need to pay for that.
Any other comment? No?
Yes, I, I think it's going to get a little more entail, I think we're going to have to find out if all these projects that are, you know, supposedly coming in, is that going to cover them, or is it going to, you know, go back in time?
The first step, the first step is to go to the state and get the, to get the approval.
Yeah, I think legislation can work with those.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Agenda item 12, miscellaneous, does anyone have anything? Mr. Hammond?
I have several things. First of all, it was brought to my attention that I may have misspoke at the last meeting regarding Dr. Brunel not being in attendance, so I owe her an apology. She was at a meeting herself on the budget. I, I do owe you an apology for that. It wasn't, you weren't here because you don't care if I said that, I am sorry. Sometimes I get a little emotional up here about things I'm passionate about, so I just need to keep my emotions in check and still stay passionate. So, I do apologize to you. I know the school committee's worked very hard on the budget, the transparency is, is excellent, and, you know, I owe you an apology for, for misspeaking. Further, I have two things for, is Darlene here? Yeah? The first one is Harrison Ave. I got a call regarding Harrison Ave, that that's supposed to be a one-way street. It seems to be an ongoing thing with the residents of Harrison Ave, that they want it to be a one-way street again, and they're claiming that just the signs were never put back up, so if we can have some clarification, whether or not it should be one-way, and we get the signs up, or it's no longer one-way, so they know that.
Harrison Ave has, has been one-way, I believe, since 1987, or has been voted at town meeting to be. When our prior engineer, Mr. Zingrelly, was here, he went through the, all the motions to make sure that everything was done legal. I was waiting him, he actually had us order the signs, but I was waiting him to tell me when everything was shored up, as far as posting it one-way, and police has started enforcing it as one-way. He left, and that's probably something that was by the wayside. You know, I mentioned it to the new engineer, but he also had a whole bunch on his plate, but I can go through that with him again.
So, I'd make a motion to at least establish whether or not Harrison Ave is one-way or not. If it is, let's get the signs up. If it's not, we can address whether it should be.
Who took the vote? It was this board back in 87?
In 87, it was a town meeting vote.
Town meeting vote.
I believe it was in 87, it was either 85 or 87.
Okay, can we, can we check, research that, and if in fact it is, let's get the signs up and take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, one, one, one more there. The second thing is fire hydrants. I received actually a few calls of hydrants being buried, and apparently, nobody knows who's supposed to clear them. Some people said it was the residents, other people said it was the fire department, and then there were others who said it was the highway. So, I, just looking for clarification on who's supposed to clear out hydrants that happen to be on people's property, and if there's any legislation should be done through town meeting to clarify that, whether it be the resident, the fire department, and/or highway.
As far as if there's legislation on it, or any type of bylaw, I, I have never heard of one.
Yeah, there isn't.
It is actually between the water department, the fire department, and the residents, is what I've always been told. What I've always been told, if you're a resident with a hydrant anywhere near your house, you should be clearing that, because obviously, it's going to be saving your house, and that just helps out the fire department and the water department.
Mr. O'Connor?
Generally, it is a unwritten protocol that it is the nearest property owner. I would not advocate that it should be the fire department.
Right, well, I would neither.
But generally, it would be the property owner, because Darlene says that it's the closest proximity to the hydrant who has an interest in it.
So, I would, go ahead.
Just as sidewalks carries a fine, does this carry a fine, if it's not cleared within so many hours after a storm?
I don't believe so, but we'll check.
Yeah, being, you know, my house burned down when I was a kid, and the last thing you want is the fire department out there with a shovel, when the house is actually on fire, digging it out, and maybe the resident should have cleared it, but if they didn't, that doesn't mean anything at that point, so, I know they are buried right now, there's a lot of them buried with the very high banks, so maybe we should establish, I don't know whether it should be there, but some kind of protocol and/or bylaw that would designate somebody to be responsible for that, so, in the event there is a fire, and that fire hydrant is buried, there will be a liability, we'll be able to be squared on somebody.
I think the difference, just to make the point, is we have a private water department.
Yeah.
And I think that makes a, a difference versus other towns and cities that have DPWs or in-town water departments, but I still wouldn't think that that would just fall strictly on them.
No, I don't know who it's going to fall on, I just think we need to say, the resident's responsible, it's in the bylaws, so, when you don't dig out your hydrant, and your house burns down, you can't come to the town and say, well, the highway department didn't dig out the hydrant, so you're, you know what I mean?
It is not highway, there's one thing that's not us.
Exactly, and I don't, you know, why fight that battle? It's, it's obviously an issue, we've been lucky, let's, you know.
I always understood it to be the resident.
It's been I that.
So, let's, I think maybe, just put that in writing somewhere, before they, you know, you know how the lawsuits are.
Okay, next?
The final thing is, is I've had multiple requests for this, so I put it in the form of a motion, I would move that we contact Verizon, as well as Milbury, and find out the protocol, or the steps needed to see if they're interested in Verizon files for Auburn. This has been a, something I've been hearing about since I began running, and they haven't approached us, so I would like to make the proactive approach to them.
Excuse me, I had someone check for me, with Verizon, someone up there that could give proper answers, and they are not ready to come to, to the town of Auburn for another, I believe it's another either year or two years, because there's not enough demand for all the lines that are, that are necessary. That was the answer that I got, if you so chose to, you know, make another request, but I was given, I was given that response by an individual that checked with, with, you know, a person in Verizon that would, would know.
I would like, I'd make a motion, at least send a letter stating that, you know, the residents of Auburn are starting to request that service.
Second.
On behalf of the board.
So, a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
That's all I got.
Anyone else have anything for miscellaneous? Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, going back to Mr. Griffins' motion relative to the impact fees, is the motion authorized in the filing of the legislation?
Yes, I, I, I'm.
I think that would require town meeting action.
What, so then, we'll amend it to investigate, until we can get the town meeting?
I wasn't sure if you were asking for information on it, or?
I'm getting a little push here, because we can't wait, because we, we brought this up a long time ago, and it didn't go anywhere, so, I, I, I would put it back on the table with them, and then if we need to bring this to town meeting in May, we'll make sure we're ready for it.
Okay, anything else from miscellaneous? Not, take a five-minute break before we go into executive session. Motion would be in order to go into executive session, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23b, deliberated upon matters which done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective agony, litigation, and the deployment of security personnel or devices, and to come out of executive session only to adjourn, followed by a roll call vote.
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Griffins?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?